I'm starting the meeting tonight as our chair has officially resigned. So the first thing we need to do is elect a new chair, but before we do that, what I'd like to do is just, I'd like to extend thanks from, I hope, all councillors and the residents of Dali Dale for all of the hard work that Mary put in over the years that she was chair of the council and while she was a councillor. I think she did a very good job. I think the Whitworth at times was a hive of activity. So I think, well done, Mary. I think she's done well keeping things going well for the community.
Yes.
Which of course then brings us on to election of a new chair. So the first question is, is who would like to stand as the chair? Does anybody wish to volunteer? Okay. I am happy to take the chair if anybody would like to nominate and secondly until May.
I'll propose that.
Second that.
Okay, show of hands on that please.
Can I make sure I get the numbers? So. So I've got Cathy and Dave. Is that you Alan? Have you got your hand up Alan?
Yeah, I have.
Dawn?
Yeah.
Okay. Has anybody not got their handle?
Carolyn.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Karen, Steve?
Just before we do, Carolyn, are you abstaining or are you saying no?
Abstain.
Okay. Right, okay, so on to the point two, apologies for absence. The only apology we have tonight is Marisa. There's point three to consider any variations of order of business. I don't think we need to vary any of the business. Does anybody have anything they want to move?
No.
No, we've already got the staff updating confidential at the very end anyway. Declaration of members' interests, I'm guessing that will just be Carolyn, Alan and Anne for the Whitworth? Any others?
Me for the allotments.
Okay, for allotments, lovely. The next one, I'm going to show up for a minute, we've got, we recently advertised for a new councillor. We only had one applicant and that was Jason Farmer who joins us tonight. So if I can just hand over to Jason, he'll tell you a little bit about himself and then we'll move that on to the vote.
Good evening everybody. Thank you for allowing me to join this meeting tonight. Basically, I applied for the post. Recently, my business has changed. Found myself with a little bit more time on my hands, which obviously, being a resident of Dali Dale for 49 years, which is all of my life, I've had a background in retail. We have a portfolio of properties which we manage and run. We've got national tenants, local tenants, residential tenants. And basically, I put myself forward for the job due to the fact that I'm quite passionate about the area in which I live and I'd like to see some changes and if that can happen, I'd like to be proposed for the job.
Thank you for that, Jason. So I'd like to propose that we co-opt Jason Farmer onto the council. Do we have somebody to second that? All in favour? Okay, unanimous.
That's a good start.
You are now a fully fledged member of the council. There will be some paperwork to do, which Sean will need to send you over to complete and get back to, Jason.
Perfect, yes, thank you very much. I'm going to look forward to my time with you. Thank you very much.
Obviously, you're now welcome to take part in the meeting going forward.
So just so I can understand the protocol going forward then, as I'm listening to things now, I'm able to interact and pass comments.
Absolutely. What we do is, just so we can keep order, we ask for a show of hands and everything goes through the chair.
Excellent, thank you very much.
So we've got the next one, town mayor and chair's announcements. Now, Mary hasn't sent me anything over and as she's retired, the only thing I'm asking is, did she send anything for you? Ian?
Sorry, we skipped public participation there, Steve.
Oh, we did, sorry. Do we have some public participation?
For the record, no, we don't.
Sorry, apologies for that.
Sorry.
No, it's best to cover it. So any of the announcements for the chair or the mayor?
We've had nothing from Mary on that, other than the note that I sent around to everybody when she resigned.
Okay, report from police, county and district councils. Well, it's very nice to see that we have a district and county councillor with us tonight. Thank you for attending, Jason. Hopefully, Jason, over the coming months, we can try and make stronger bonds with all of the district and county councillors and try and forge a way forward to work closely with you guys. Do we have anything from police, county or district, Ian? And if not, then I'll go to Dave because I would think he'll have an update on things.
No, we don't have anything in, Steve, again.
Okay. Dave, do you have anything?
Steve, for me, at this point, it's for me to tell you what's going off at county and district.
Brilliant, okay.
So. Countywide, we'll start off with the yellow lines proposal that was put before me two years ago and which your town clerk has never replied to. So as you know, Steve, I have now had a conversation with my officer at the county hall. He will be forwarding on to you again, fifth time, an email for the proposals that were put forward. Please read it carefully. If you need anything added, please copy me in and I will make sure the double yellow lines get added so we can get them all done. From district council point of view, with working with Dave, I know Dave's had a few issues at the allotments. I think Dave's now had all the paperwork through from my officer at the district council with regards to a red line and who actually owns what down at the Church Town allotments. So other than that, I've got no further, nothing else further to report. Thank you very much.
Brilliant, thank you for that, Jason. Ian and Dave, do you have anything there?
The only thing that's happening at the moment with the police is that they're monitoring the tipping again because they've been breaking into the fenced area. They're concerned about antisocial behaviour across the whole of Dali Dale. There's a gang walking around that are underage that aren't covered by the stop and fine system that they're trying to get in through county and district. So we are ongoing with that one and that might come into play a bit later on when we get the committee sorted out. So there's a bit more coordination. At the moment, I'm just talking to one PCSO and emailing in information if I find drug drops and things, which we've got two on the go at the moment, we're keeping an eye on.
Okay, thank you for that, Dave. Jason, could I just come back to you? So this, obviously, I know we've spoken about the yellow lines, but will your officer send them directly to me as well as the town clerk?
Yes, I've spoken to him today. He will forward the email on to me and I will forward it both to the clerk and yourself as the chair.
Brilliant, thank you, Jason. Dawn? Dawn, you need to unmute yourself. Unmute, yeah.
I have done. And just, we've seen, did I miss the minutes? Resolution to pass the minutes?
No, Dawn, you didn't.
Could I make a point then, before we pass them, that it says in the Whitworth part that the century garden was done by the Whitworth? Could you just include somewhere along the line that it was Dali Dale and Blooms and the volunteers? It would be nice to have them quite prominent in that point. Thank you.
I will come back to the minutes, Dawn, that's my fault, sorry. That's two, two I've missed tonight. Okay, so if we just go back to point four then, minutes of previous meeting, has everybody read them?
Yeah.
I've read them and I have watched the last meeting even though I wasn't there. I think that's a good point, Dawn, as well, to make sure it's minute. So other than that, amend, Ian, are we all happy to sign off on their minutes?
Yeah.
We have a show of hands? Yeah, brilliant. Okay, sorry about that. Twinning report now then, have we all read the twinning report? There hasn't a lot been going on with Twinning, obviously with Covid and social distancing. I do, obviously, I'm aware that they've had some Zoom meetings and they're looking to reformat a closer link with the council, which I think is working quite well. We've still got to finalise it when we can get back together, which, you know, again, I'm looking forward to doing a sitting down and getting it all ratified as to which way we're all going with it. So other than that, there's not an awful lot to tell you. Okay, everybody happy for me to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, now then. Finance, has everybody looked at the finance payments? Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Everybody happy with them payments? So we're happy to sign off, approve the payments for August. Have you all seen the banking reconciliation for August as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, happy to sign off that that's all correct?
Yeah.
The approval of the budget monitoring for August 2020, happy with that? Lovely. Nobody got any questions about any of that?
No.
Brilliant, okay, so we're happy with them. If we can then move on to the update on the Church Road allotment and repairs to the perimeter fencing. If I can just, can I, sorry, Dawn, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, are we not supposed to do each one individually, a recommendation and a, no, we don't have to vote on that, okay.
Well, if we're all happy, I mean, I'll tell you what then, yeah, okay, is everybody happy to approve the payments for August 2020? Show of hands, please. Okay, Carolyn, are you abstaining again?
Sorry, no, sorry, I was happy to approve it.
Okay. Are we happy to approve the bank reconciliation for August? Can we have a show of hands again, please?
Yeah.
Lovely. And the approval of the budget monitoring for August as well. Everybody happy with that? Brilliant, okay, fantastic. So the Church Road allotment, obviously, you know, last month, the digger went in, they've done tremendous work down at the allotment. There's obviously, at the last meeting, there was, things came up about a bunker and additional costs for a bunker, et cetera. The good news is that the allotment committee have managed to find around about £1,500 and they will now be able to pay for the bunkers themselves, which is brilliant news. The one thing that we do need to discuss tonight is the security of the allotment and repairing the perimeter fencing now. The situation with the allotment is it's our responsibility to make sure they're secure and that they're safe for the general public. And as it stands, they are not. There's a lot of thoroughfare going through that shouldn't be going through. So there's been quotations to carry out the work, to get these brought up to standard. The quotation we've had, including VAT, is around about £250. It's actually going to be a bit less. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to propose that we provide another £250 to secure the perimeter of the allotment and make sure that it's safe for the public. Sorry, James?
Do we need three quotes at all?
Well, what we're doing here is, this is, that's for materials, we're using Richard, who we already pay for the labour. So because that's just materials, so it's around about £250, including the VAT, and we're using Richard to carry out the work. So no, we don't need three quotes. So I'd like to propose that we provide.
Sorry, have we got something in writing on it at least?
Yeah, Ian has everything in writing.
And is Ian happy with it all?
So, yes, I am, Alan. I think the price is literally for materials. I've got quotes from Old Valley for posts and for cross beans and.
Okay, so I'd like to move that to a motion to give the allotment up to £250 towards the securing of the boundary and making it safe for the public. Who'd like to second that? Thank you, Alan. All in favour?
Thank you, everyone. Can I just pick up that point because it got a few oohs, Steve, just to explain where the £1,500 came from. It didn't miraculously appear. What happened was that the committee reformed and took over the old committee's bank account. When they then went to the bank to shift that account, they were so pleased to see this old inactive account moved that they gave them £1,500. So it was a little bit of an unexpected gift. And they're now going to use that to pay for the bunker, which you guys, I think, had previously approved towards the back end of last year. That's an expense that they're taking on, which at one point we thought we'd be taking on. So that was really good of them, I think.
I think it's also interesting to note that, and I think Jason Atkins got his hand up. And I think the district of council have also donated £500 to the allotment towards that as well. So I mean, that's going to save the council in the region of around about £2,000, which is brilliant news. Dave?
I think it needs mentioning that the allotment committee are now fully formed. I've got a list of the people on that committee and they have a very active committee, are going to do a lot of the work themselves from now. We're going to get a lot of help from them for maintenance and whatever. So if we can keep on top of it and keep them inspired and keep them motivated, they see us doing things, they'll get on with it and they've been working down there over last weekend. So it's quite a lot of work being done and they will clear ground and help us do stuff that would cost us, they'll do it. So it's beneficial.
I just, I mean, Dave and Ian, I think you guys have done a fantastic job down at the allotment and I think it's going to be nice to see it all secured with everybody working together with a common goal. I think that's absolutely fantastic. So, well done. Sorry, just before we move on, because Jason Atkins did have his hand up. Did you need to speak, Jason?
No, also, I've got to say, as I, from my members' community leadership, from giving money to the allotments at Church Town to facilitate this bunker, and I'm quite happy in the future, if they want to apply for me from my county, I'm quite happy to facilitate another grant if needed.
Brilliant, thank you, Jason. I don't know who had the hand up first, so can I go to Anne first, Dawn?
All right, okay. I'd just like to say from a point of view of the allotment holders, because I didn't vote for that because I can't. But I think you've done tremendous work, both Ian and Dave, and it's been really well received and people are feeling enthusiastic and as if it's worth investing time and money in the place, which is really important.
Brilliant, thank you, Anne. Dawn?
When it was first muted a few months ago, I did send an email and never had a reply regarding the public liability and health and safety of things because I'm of the opinion, of the impression that they're quite large, these bunkers. So now it's passed on to the allotment and they're going to do it. Do we have any responsibility? Any public liability or do we have to do any, you know, health and safety check yearly or? Just a point.
Yeah, it's an interesting point. It's replacing an old one, but it's in a completely different position. It's in a far better position actually and it's not, it's not perhaps, I mean, bunker sounds bulky and huge, doesn't it, Dawn? And it's not actually, it's about three or four foot high and it's just timber and concrete structure that they store stone, manure, compost that they get gifted from local businesses on. But yes, you're right, we need to keep a health and safety check on everything and the allotments probably do want, actually.
We can do it.
I would suggest, Dawn, that based on the fact that it's our land, even though they're paying to put it here, we'll have to make sure it's insured and maintained with health and safety. So I would think that that would be prudent anyway. You're still on mute, Dawn?
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions or points on that at all? Happy to move on? Okay, if I can now hand you over to Julie, Julie Daly, councillor Daly, for the report from the planning working group.
Yeah, you should have all had a copy of the findings of the meeting on Monday evening, the recommendations that was made. Does anybody have any questions regarding those decisions?
No.
No? Okay, so, well, I propose then that we approve the recommendations made by the planning committee.
All in favour? Brilliant, thank you. So over to councillor Long, Alan, if you can give us an update on the Whitworth Centre and Trading Matters, please.
So you should all have a sort of one page of summary from me, a copy of the latest management accounts, a copy of the park accounts and a copy of the last improvement. It's completely not going to go through all of those. So, but obviously I'll take any questions on them. Just in terms of highlights, I think we've had another good month. Clearly, the cafe has been helped by the Monday to Wednesday meal scheme, which has kept us busy through the week and we're exceeding our forecasted numbers from catering at the moment. We've just signed off our restart plans for the rest of the building, albeit on a very limited basis. We've reduced capacities, enhanced cleaning and so forth, clear waterways systems. And we will have three meeting rooms available on a staggered basis from the 7th of September. And we will ensure that anybody who's using those meeting rooms will not come into contact with cafe users. So we're basically treating it as two separate parts. So we've had a health and safety consultant check it and we're pretty confident of what we're doing in that space. We've begun the lottery five year plan project now. It's a typo there, it says DBS, it should read DBA, so apologies for that. And we are currently tendering for an architect to do the full budget building survey and indeed park survey for us. And we've been out to five lottery approved architects and we'll get responses for that on the 7th of September. Since we last met, I've secured another £15,000 of funding, which is amazing really, and £10,000 from the lottery for their emergency recovery fund and £5,000 from Seven Trent. And I guess a combination of good cafe performance and more grant income than I thought means that our financial position is improving and we're now ahead of where I thought we'd be at this point. With the obvious caveat, there's lots of local lock runs happening around the country and who knows whether we will be next. So as a result of that, we're being even more cautious now, I suppose, while we are opening up very limited conferencing, very little, very limited meeting capability from the 7th of September. We're being even more cautious than what we forecast around those numbers, given people's willingness to do these kind of things at the moment, plus the risk that, you know, next week we might be completely shut again for all we know. We've made one change to non-councillor trustees, which I think will help both us and the council in the sense that the new trustee is a senior partner in a law firm. So we obviously had conversations over the last year or two on various aspects of governance and I'm hoping that will save us some money as well as speed up response. We discussed last time a contact I made with Age UK regarding giving pensioners the opportunity to get back together safely within the park and we're all hoping for a good day on 22nd, nice weather would be bonus. And that event is being really organised pretty much fully by Age UK with our support and they provided with a set of guidelines as to how they're going to ensure safety of their people while they're doing that. And finally, bits of news really, we've now launched, it was a request made both through councillors of the public at this meeting and directly to Whitworth if we could introduce an annual parking pass. That's now available and people have been buying that and gives people the chance to park as many times as they want as Whitworth over the course of the year for £50. And the sad point, I suppose, to end on, which probably won't come as a surprise to anybody, is we've had to give Liam Coleman, the general manager's personal circumstances, we've now had to end his contract and we are going through a recruitment process for a new general manager. And if we find the right person who we're confident can generate the income to cover his salary plus deliver the services we want, then we will look to appoint as soon as we can. We've had over 100 applicants for the role. I've interviewed, first interviewed, along with one of the trustee, 14 people so far. They will go through to a second interview with a presentation format and then the best two will be taken to the board for a final decision. So yeah, I guess net summary of that is, good month.
Alan, could I just ask you a couple of questions regarding the annual parking permit? Has that been negotiated with the parking company so that they're not charging everybody as they're going in and out every single time?
Correct. All we have to do, it's fully within our control, obviously we've told them we're doing this. We just registered the car registration number on to the computer directly. So if nobody on that registration number, when they're picked up on the camera, will be sent any kind of notice. The one caveat, and it's worth all councillors knowing this, and obviously we're stressing this hard, is that it's covering the registration number, it's not covering the person. So if that same person turns up with a different car, then yeah, that won't be covered.
Okay. And just on the, obviously, it's sad to hear that you've had to let Liam go, positive news that you're moving forward. Just one question about interviewing and putting a new manager of the centre in place. The only question I would ask is, is it not worth putting the manager in place when we know a bit more what's happening with Covid rather than getting somebody in place straight away?
I think we've included him right from the replacements, right from the front, from day one, if you like, in our financial assumptions and they have now improved. I think it's even more critical that we have somebody who can, given that the kind of income that the Whitworth's going to get going forward is going to be different to the kind of income we've had in the past. So right now, we have, conferences and meetings are going to be very different. More people will be doing meetings like this in the future, so we can't rely on that kind of source of income going forward. We've got a lot of uncertainty even about things like weddings and getting those back going within the Whitworth. So we've got to drive getting new income into the centre and that person will be recruited and managed on the basis of being able to demonstrate that they have at least returned their salary through generating additional income to what we've currently got in the forecast. If that doesn't work out, that will become a difficult conversation in a few months' time. But funny, I mean, the people that have applied to us, in fact, we've got over 100 applicants, that is a reflection of the times we're living in. There are organisations and people from organisations applying. Quite amazing, Steve, really, for a little place like the Whitworth Centre. So if we're going to get anybody good, now is the time, I think.
Okay, and James?
Just a quick question, the £15,000, where did that come from?
The, as per the ground funding, so £10,000 from the lottery and £5,000 from Seven Trent Water, as far as I'm aware.
It's okay, yeah, yeah, it's for the two, I'm with you.
Alan, I've just got one more question to ask. Over the course of the last weekend, I had a few residents send me pictures of the park down in Dali Dale with a lot of rubbish everywhere and bins.
It is a problem, that's definitely, I mean, somebody referred to it earlier in this conversation. I think all parks across and all lanes across the whole of the county are really struggling at the moment. There's definitely more littering now than we've had as long as I've been involved with the Whitworth. And so we are stepping up lit appearances. Funny, the worst time tends to be directly after the district's taken away the bins and of extra rubbish as a part of that clearance turns up at that time. It's not just litter, as Dave will have said as well, we have more instances of particularly youngsters cycling across croquet pitches, cycling across bowls, cycling too fast through the park. So we've got a lot of, well, I say we've got a lot, it's all low level stuff. And obviously, I'm hoping with people going back to schools, things will improve a little bit. But yeah, I'd echo, it's become a problem and we are doing our best to keep to on top of it.
Okay, one other question was asked was if the caretakers were there over the weekend, if they could just patrol and if there's litter, just pick it up, if that's possible?
I'll answer that question or let Anne go first, either way.
Okay. I was going to say, one of the things that I'm going to do is email everybody and see if any of you are able to spare half an hour a week to help with some litter picks. Because while I know that they do, the staff do some litter picks, the problem at the moment is, it's just, there's just so much. And it's right across the board and Jason will know from county, we are having so many problems. We've got lots of people from that area who are coming in, they're very happy to wander along with great bags full of stuff and they just leave them in fields and in parks and everywhere. And we're just overrun. But what we quite like to do is have like a regular community thing where somebody goes through the park and they're like a designated person and maybe we put up some times and say, you know, at these times we're going to be doing litter picks. Anyone wants to join us sort of thing and just be a presence in the park as well as just picking up some litter really. So I'm going to email you if that's all right, everyone, and see if anyone can offer.
Yeah, well, well.
A little an option approach really.
Yeah, well done, Anne. And Jason Atkin?
Thanks Chair, just a point of information with regard to Covid-19.
Just to make a point, you need to step out of standing orders.
Thank you, Don. And I'd like to propose we step out of standing orders for councillor Atkin.
Yeah, okay.
Just as a point of clarification to do with Covid-19, Derbyshire Dales has not seen a rise in the number of cases of Covid-19 for over 14 days. So Derbyshire Dales is well placed, it's only got 256 cases of Covid-19. So don't believe the scaremongering about being locked down in Derbyshire Dales. I know myself as a county councillor, this will not happen in Derbyshire Dales because the cases are now going down. The cases that are going up are in North East Derbyshire and in the High Peak. So that's all I'd like to say on that subject. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, anything else on the Whitworth? No? Okay, lovely. Right, if we move on to a more tricky one, the terms of reference for committees. Now, I've had quite a few conversations here with Ian regarding the committees. Has everybody read the terms of reference for each committee? Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I've just got one very small question really. I thought that, again, they'd be well, well put together, reflecting views I think we shared. I would just like clarity on where a written report is provided into the board, i.e. to the council meeting and where a verbal update is sufficient. So, but I don't mind.
Is that on all of them, Alan?
Yeah, just so we know, because I think some updates are, we need to be clear whether a verbal update is sufficient or not, or whether that's a finance committee or planning committee, as we've seen a planning report for this meeting, whether that applies to all committees or not.
Go on.
If there are committees, then they have to be agendaised in half minutes anyway, don't they?
Yeah. And what, sorry, James, go ahead.
Just a quick one, our last meeting, when we talked about dividing up the different subcommittees, there was going to be a summary as well, if you remember, regarding the Whitworth committee as well. Just to break down a very simple summary on the points within that as well.
Yeah, I provided something on that, so I'll let Ian comment on that one.
Yeah, I can certainly circulate that. Yeah, Alan did give me something on that. I think today was, for me at least, today was about putting these in front of the council and trying to get some sort of agreement around whether these were right and whether we should start moving to this. It's only a small shift actually, and whether we should start moving to that perhaps in September really, you know.
Okay, I obviously I wasn't at the last meeting due to some personal circumstances, but I have watched the whole of the last meeting. And there seems to be some consternation around these terms of reference for certain committees. It seems to me that the council's kind of split on accepting these terms of reference for all committees. And having read through them, I have my own reservations as well. I would like to make a recommendation where what I'd like to do, if possible, is the planning and the community group committees, I would like to vote to devolve the powers to them groups. However, the finance and personnel committee, I would like to keep as they are where we have finance meetings and personnel meetings and we bring the recommendations back to council. I would like to not change the finance and personnel groups. Does anybody have any thoughts on that? Alan?
I'm reasonably clear on the finance one, but I think, I've nothing against what you're saying, but I think just so we're being clear, what we are signing off, that we again look at the personnel one and the finance one and ratify it. That's what we want. But if this is different to the personnel and finance terms and reference at the moment, which I think may be, can we just get, if you're proposing that we stick with what we got on the current ones, can we just all see that again?
I think my chats with Ian have been that actually we'll try and work to the terms of reference that we've got without actually making them their own individual decision-making committees. So basically what will happen is we'll work to the terms of reference, but everything as it does now will just come back to council. So it makes everything a collective responsibility as opposed to a few individuals taking them decisions.
On a point of order, Steve, I'm told that we need to vote on each individual one. So if you want to make a resolution around planning and then make a resolution about the community services, that will be voted. And then we can talk about the other two if people are happy with that.
Yeah, I'm happy with that. Is everybody happy to move on to resolutions? Sorry, Anne?
Can I just ask, are we going to get something, I know we need to do the parties first, but are we then going to move on to do working parties? Because I have to say, I very much like us to get our environmental working party back going again when we can.
Once, what we've got going on, Anne, is obviously you've got Jason Farmer who's joined tonight. And we do still need to fill one other place. So hopefully by the September meeting, we will be able to fill that place. And then we can look at doing the committees at that point.
Right, okay.
Can I say something on that, Steve?
Yeah, absolutely, Ian.
So working parties, I mean, we sort of deliberately sidestepped, if I'm honest, Anne, because under normal circumstances, actually, we'd have probably had quite a few working parties running around the cinema, around Dalidale and doing all the things. But I'm keen to pick that up after this and I'm particularly keen to talk to you about yours, but there will be others. So yes, I'll be in torch next week perhaps and we can start that conversation.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so the first thing I'd like to do then is I'd like to propose that we accept the terms of reference for the planning committee, please.
I'll second it.
Everybody in favour? Okay, lovely. I would like to propose that we accept the terms of reference for the the community services committee, please. Anybody second that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favour? Okay, I would like to recommend, or I'd like to propose that we we work to the terms of reference for the personnel committee, but that no decision is made in that committee and it is brought back to the council. So a full council decision is made.
We just changed the terms of reference then? So I'm not sure, what is it on here changing?
The thing that's changing on here, Alan, effectively on the list itself, nothing changes except for there is no delegated power for that committee to make them decisions, it has to come back to full council. Sorry, Ian.
What I was going to say is what you're describing there, Steve, is what they call an advisory committee. I'm sure Jason Atkin will have a view on this and that's fine. That is, you know, a lot of the conversations are taking place in that committee, but everything comes back to the main committee. So the simple answer might be to, you know, if you're up with the terms of reference, we make it an advisory committee. So you have no decision-making powers effectively whatsoever, everything comes back. And to answer Alan's point, I think everything comes back as a written recommendation or a set of recommendations.
Can I just step outside of standing orders to allow councillor Atkin to speak? Is everybody in favour of that?
Yeah.
Okay, councillor Atkin?
Thank you Chair, yeah. Working groups are normally advisory and have got no legal capacity at all. Mostly committees would sit and make recommendations. They would have to be noted and accepted at full council meetings. So that is where the difference is. A working group is only advisory. You can set up as many working groups with as many members, co-opted members as you like. But as to legislation, they have got no powers at all. The other committee you're on about would have to come back and the minutes would have to be signed off like we do at district and like we do at county. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Roger me again. So what is it on the, because most of these delegates, given what councillor Atkin has just said, what aren't all these points on here, they're going to have to be reported back. So for example, we'll make full, no, point one, make full recommendations to full council. I'm generally not sure what the problem is with this, given stuff that needs a decision is coming back to council anyway. So what is it that you're not happy about in here, I guess?
I think, I can only speak from my point of view and from what I was listening to at the last meeting, Alan. And that is that I think with something as important as personnel and finance, where we're all liable for the decisions that are made, I think it's important that these decisions come back before full council as opposed to once a committee, which could be three people effectively, make decisions that could cause everybody a problem. And that is ultimately why I'm recommending that the finance and the personnel committees in particular, everything comes back to full council so that we all have the opportunity. If something could possibly go wrong, we have the opportunity to stop it from going wrong.
Okay, and can the, sorry, one other point, can the finance committee then be a working group? So it's becoming a working group, I wouldn't, I don't know if it can be. Legally, we have to have a finance committee as opposed to a working group?
Yeah.
Or an advisory committee.
Yeah. Can I just step outside of standing orders again for councillor Atkin to give us some guidance on this, please?
Yeah, thank you very much Chair. I would suggest that anything ready to finance would have to be ratified by full council, even given recommendations in a committee. Council would still ratify if council was not happy with the recommendations. Council itself could overrule the committee. Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
I think that's what it says.
Yeah, it is what it says, yeah. The only bits, sorry, the only bits on the finance committees that delegate, if you like, some real financial powers are the things around agreeing, I think number 11, which was agreeing the grants. And number eight, which was agreeing one or project expenditure, people are uncomfortable with them, then we could take those out. And it's effectively another advisory committee. So it's taking a lot of the time and the conversation away from the main. So when it's not diminishing your collective ability to control and approve these things, I think that will be a good way forward personally.
Okay.
To remove items 11?
Yeah, I think, I think item eight and 11 seem to be the sort of decision-making devolved powers, Alan. And if what we're talking about here is trying to create a scenario where everything comes back in those two areas to the main council, they're the two contentious issues. I have no strong views either way. You know, you could probably make it work either way. It's your collective decision at the end of the day, I'm happy to amend them as appropriate.
Okay, any other questions? Right, I'm going to move this on then. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to recommend, or I'd like to propose that the personnel committee be an advisory committee with no delegated powers of decision. Can I have a show of hands on somebody to second that? Thank you. Show of hands, please. Thank you, everybody. Yep, that was everybody. And I'd also like to propose that the finance committee has the same, it becomes an advisory committee which brings everything back to full council with no delegated powers. Thank you Dave for seconding that. Any, all in favour? Lovely, thank you.
I'm against that one because I do think, but I'm going to be the minority. I think the finance committee should be a proper committee with some delegated authority. I think that would be my view.
Okay, that's noted and thank you for that, Alan.
So Steve, just before we move on then, so it's important for me that I get these terms of reference right. So where does that leave item eight and 11?
They will, they'll need to come out because we have no delegated spending power in the finance committee. But I think as a whole, Ian, the work that you and Sean have done on these terms of reference is absolutely fantastic. And I think on principle, we will work to the terms of reference just without the delegated powers. And that way everybody has collective responsibility, that's all.
Okay, good.
So thank you to you and Sean for that. Okay, I'll hand you back over to Alan for nominations for the Whitworth Trust from councillors.
I'm not sure this is really my point, obviously I'm keen to get, we've currently got three councillors who are trustees and we need two more.
Do we have any volunteers? Sorry, Don, do you have a question?
I do, you said we need two more, I thought you needed a council committee of seven.
Yeah, I think I'm mixing the two up, you're absolutely right, yeah. We need seven, seven and we've got three.
Okay, do we have any volunteers for the Whitworth Trust? Okay, what I'd like to ask then is if it's all right with you, Alan, is if people can have a ponder on that and don't contact you directly?
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, we're cool without it, but this is the way, the council's opportunity to influence the, what happens in the trust on a daily basis. So we do need volunteers to come forward on this, please.
Okay.
I have to say, I wasn't that keen to begin with to be a Whitworth Trust, hush your ears here, Alan councillor, because I did feel that I was keen to do other things really. But I do think this has been a real opportunity, especially through lockdown, for us to provide a service for the whole community. And so many people have been so pleased that when other things were shut, they could go around the park, they could do other things. And undoubtedly there are lots of challenges, but it's also a great opportunity to provide something for the community, to make it a community hub, which was the original thing, you know, when Dave was with councillors years back trying to look at what we could provide for the community. And we really need people to come and help take it forward, you know. And I know some of you are fairly critical of things, well, come on board and be critical and be helpful. You know, Alan must find me a thorn in his side a lot, I know, because I ask a lot of questions and I query things and I want to know why we do this and why we do that and, you know. But that's part of our role, isn't it, being critical friends? But we are there to be councillors who are looking at how this wonderful resource can be used and taken forward. So, you know, I would just plead with people to take up some role within this because, you know, three councillors, when we're meant to have seven, you know, there's no point in criticizing and saying how can we make decisions and whose responsibility is it if people aren't willing to actually get on and be part of the trustee?
Thank you for that, Anne. Don?
I'd just like to make a point that I've got no criticism against the trust. Just having retired, having resigned a few short months ago, I don't feel as though it's the right time to come on it, but next year I would like to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, so if anybody is interested, can they please contact councillor Long as soon as possible? And Alan, will you let Ian know and myself know if you get any approaches, please?
Yeah, I will do. And we probably do need to force a decision, don't we, Steve, if this continues? Because the council isn't being adequately represented.
Okay, Ian, can we put that back on to make sure it's on the agenda at next month that we fill them places?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, Shaun.
One of the, can I just say again, one of the really unfortunate things is that we were going to have a sort of trustees and councillors get together, weren't we, before Covid came along, you know, not that long into, which I think would have been wonderful, because I think there'd have been a real opportunity for us to get to meet each other. And everybody to see how we could all work together for the greater good of Dali Dale and the people, yeah.
Which may not be a bad idea when we know where we're getting to the back end of Covid still, Anne.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, are we happy to move on from that point? Thank you. Okay, so I will hand over now again to you, councillor along for community awards.
Yeah, so I can't remember which meeting, but earlier in the year, we agreed that we would repeat the community awards. Obviously, taking account of Covid, we would need to adapt what we are doing versus what we did successfully last year. So the town clerk, myself and Dawn got together to discuss what we should do. As by way of reminder, there'll be six awards this year as opposed to seven. And probably the main changes are inability to divert, to do a dinner this year. I think that would be inappropriate. But we'd like to continue with the six awards and to award people, as well as the nice trophy that they got last year, they would be given a £50 thank you vouchers to go and have a nice meal with them and their family. And instead of them coming to a dinner to receive the award, proposing that we go out to them, assuming that they'll take us. And that's linked to the other thing I was going to do. I found sponsors for every award again. Albeit, we've asked for less money this year, even though there is no dinner. So, so for example, at the, it's not called the Dali Dale now, is it? It's a sticky fig. We would go, we'd do the presentation at Sticky Fig for that award that they particularly, that they've sponsored. Which, and I have the photographs done and everything else, and it will need, it will need councillor representation to go out when those photographs are taken. A big advertiser have agreed to support us again. And they will do two features in September to launch this. Shaun will work on the September issue of Community Voice. I'm helping Shaun with leaflets and posters. We don't think it's appropriate, a lot of, this will be difficult this year. A lot of our nominations came last year from leaflets in various outlets around Dali Dale. That's more of a concern to us this year in terms of having lots of leaflets with pens, things being written on them. So it's going to be a bit harder to get as many nominations. But actually, this year is particularly important in terms of community awards. So councillors, and I do mean all councillors, are going to have to try and do their best to support this and make sure that everybody is aware that the awards are available, what they are and how you apply. The other thing, so yeah, the last thing to mention is Shaun asked me to mention that while the sponsorship fund will cover the £50 vouchers, if you like, the meal vouchers of giving away, there is still need to provide some, produce some trophies, which we did last year. And there is still need to produce some posters and leaflets to be cited around Dali Dale. And Shaun asked that I mention a request for £500, which I think, I'm not sure about, I think was what was originally mentioned anyway. So I guess I'm asking for two things on the awards. One, to check everybody's happy with the approach I've outlined. And secondly, that the £500 is still there from the council to allow us to do this. Yeah.
Thank you Alan. James?
One other thing. Two sponsors who sponsored last year and able to sponsor this year. One was Peak Rail, because they're obviously in some difficulty themselves at the moment. The other was Turners, who are, who supported the teacher award again for the same reason, they've struggled. It's one less award, so we've got, we have one more unsponsored. So I've agreed the Whitworth will sponsor the sixth award.
Brilliant. Thank you Alan. James?
Okay, yeah. I think I mentioned this last time. I'm a great believer in it. I think it's fantastic. I think last year went really, really well. It's a great institution to do it. And the last year, obviously, we put boxes around the community and I think people put in their nominations in there. We counted them up and it was obviously a tactile kind of experiment in respect to, to actually people having to physically do something to do that. And I think it worked well and we got a lot of nominations. I'm assuming, I didn't see the numbers on how many people voted. And I assume this is going to go all online voting then, is it, for?
Well, as I say, as I said just now, we're not, we're not doing, we won't be putting lots of leaflets all around Dali Dale. We will do something in places like the Whitworth Cafe, but yes, it's clearly online voting. There'll be the ability to vote directly into the peak advertiser. So like last year, the peak advertiser carried an entry slip. Anything else councillors can think of really?
I think it's all about timing this. I think it's a great idea, a great thing to do. But my personal view is just to hold fire on it until things calm down. That would, that's my, I said it last time at the last meeting. And maybe postpone it until we can actually make it a proper event. And really, you know, give an accolade to people, rather than just doing it kind of a half measure thing online that people can only access and do online, as opposed to all the elderly people in the area who probably don't have access to various things and they can't vote or don't know how to vote. And just that postponement would have been my advisory, that's all on that one.
Yeah, well, that's okay. I thought we'd agree we would do it. Certainly what we agreed last time around. So I know we had a discussion on it, but I spent a fair bit of time on it. On the basis of the council said it's what, that it was something we wanted to do. So it would be unfortunate if we changed our minds now.
Okay. Can I just step outside standing orders for Councillor Atkin?
Thank you very much. I mean, Dave will know as well as I do, because I used to be a member of the Dali Dale Town Council. There was an annual painting competition, which was commissioned by the Whitworth Trust. I believe there is actually a trophy or should be underneath downstairs for this annual painting competition. And also at one time of day, there was an annual bursary for gifted children in Dali Dale to go towards their education. So I think that you might, it'd be nice to think that you might start trying to do those sorts of things again, that were always done by Whitworth Trust. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Atkin.
Yeah, makes sense.
Talking about the council awards now, aren't we, so?
Well, from what you've said there, we've got £500 to put towards something. The idea of giving it to gifted children as well as opposed to potentially local, local business people or whatever. It's a very open subject. If that local award went to gifted children as well and other, and other areas, then yeah, I think that could be interesting to expand it. Yeah.
We agreed, I'm going to repeat, we agreed last time we wanted to do it. We agreed the awards that we wanted to support and we agreed that we would put, the council would put some money into it. So on the basis of that, I went away and did the work I've done involving council award and getting the sign up of six sponsors. So if the council changed its mind on that now, would be a little strange, I think, James.
So can I just interject here, Ian? Obviously, I wasn't at the last meeting. Can you just refresh our memories? Did the council vote to go ahead with the community awards in that? Because I know the format was discussed at the last meeting, you know, the £50 and meeting people off site.
It was agreed in principle, Stephen. It was agreed that Alan and Shaun would get together with me actually, although I wasn't available. And that we would come back with a proposal, which is what Alan's doing. Yeah, I think it was agreed, yes.
Okay. Well, let's put it to the vote then. Alan, do you want to make your proposals?
Well, the proposal is that we continue with what the council's agreed and that the £500 that I think Shaun set aside is allocated to the purchase of trophies and for some of the marketing material for the council.
Okay, can we have a second there? Dawn, are you seconding that? Or have you got, yeah, thank you. All in favour?
I can see Anne. Anybody else?
Carolyn, Dawn.
Is that it?
Okay, is anybody not in favour?
Not in favour.
James?
I've said my piece. I'd be wrong if I didn't say this.
Anybody, can I see a show of hands, anybody not in favour?
Okay.
Julie, anybody else? And I'm assuming the rest of you abstained, so if my maths is right, Steve, it's carried that.
It's carried, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Town plan, councillor along?
Okay, I mean, I'm concerned about that lots of people have abstained on the community awards, but I'll move on. The town report, so again, I was asked to, I presented a proposal on this at the last meeting. And I was asked to go along with Shaun and Ian to develop a proposal. So we have met. The paper is as per the last board with some tweaks that Ian and Shaun wanted to make around the services that will be covered off in the town report. Ian will now consider the implications of the town report for each committee in terms of what each committee will need to do and the timing requirements for the areas of consultation that will need to happen as a part of that, with an aim to have the first report by, ready by May 2021. There may be some budget requirement, but that hasn't been defined at this stage, that to do with the consultation on this report. So the next action, there's nothing to decide at this meeting. The next action is for Ian to, to continue to work through with support from me and whoever else wants to be involved to come up with a firm proposal for each committee.
Okay, thank you Alan. Anybody have any questions? Anne?
I am remiss because I should have asked about this earlier, I'm sorry. But could we link in also to environmental working party? Because having heard your proposals last time, I sort of wrote it later on and I felt actually the other strand that maybe we need to include is the environment and sustainability. Because.
I wholeheartedly agree with that. It does touch on it, Anne, already, so.
It does, yes, yeah.
So if I could ask you to liaise directly with Ian on that and just because Ian is finalising the link on that.
Yeah.
Okay, Alan, Ian rather?
Just to say, I'm quite excited about this. I think this is a great opportunity for us to not only measure what we do, but measure the impact we make. And be very clear that what we are doing is in line with what residents want us to do. And so there's a lot more work to be done on this year, but I think that's where it will take us. And I think we'll be sitting here, well, I'm hoping that we'll be sitting here in 12 months' time. And we'll have a much better understanding about how well all of us are doing collectively and whether that's what the residents want us to do. I think this is a great, it's got the potential to be a real game changer for us and I'm really quite excited about it.
Brilliant. Thank you Ian. Any other questions? Okay, can I just, can I just go back to councillor along, the comment you made about community awards, Alan? I didn't vote because I wasn't at the last meeting when, when the community awards was discussed and the format for it. I don't think, from what I heard, I don't think anybody was against it. I do understand that it would be lovely to get everybody down to the Whitworth and do the same as we did again last year and it's not practical because of Covid. So yeah, it is, it's just finding the best solution. But the motion's passed and yeah, I think everybody's happy about that.
I guess it's, it needs people to be behind it, otherwise it won't work. So if councillors are abstaining and not prepared to promote it, then I'm wasting my time on time. So it'll just be a self fulfilling prophecy. So I need people to be behind it and help out making the community aware that there are awards, how they apply. Frankly, it ain't worth my effort without the support of councillors. So it needs one, we all, I actually think that a split vote on this isn't terribly helpful. I think we all need, all need, want to get behind it. What I don't get is there's never been a more important year for us to say thank you to people and to, and to say well done to anybody who's done something for the last six months. The longer you leave it, the more after, after the event it will seem to people.
Okay, Julie?
Just, just on that point, I mean, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Alan. The problem we've got at the moment, as you, as you know, is just getting the word out there. We've tried to do these community, you know, come and have a cup of coffee with us. It hasn't worked. Nobody's picked up on it. The word doesn't seem to have got out there. And I just feel it, you know, £500 is a lot of money for something that perhaps only 20, 30 people will participate in.
Can I, can I, sorry, just before I move on to you there, and I think as the motion was carried, Alan, what I'm hearing is, yeah, of course, people have got reservations, but I don't see any councillors on the screen at the minute that wouldn't actively participate in promoting it and trying to make sure it's as successful as possible. If I'm wrong, could somebody please tell me that they don't wish to participate? So we're all happy to promote the community, sorry, James, just one second.
Just on a quick point, just putting up posters in places, going round. If people are happy to walk round and go into places and get involved with that at the moment, that's great. I'd have a little bit with shielding and various other things. I just have concerns over doing that, taking the word out onto the street, if you like.
Okay, but as, as the motion's been carried, is everybody happy to promote and try and do the best to make sure as many people know about this as possible?
It was successful last year because all councillors were involved. We had over 300 nominations and everybody did their bit, or mostly, most people did their bit to walk round to those outlets. So I'm not going to do that on my own. So if people are not prepared to get physically involved and go and see those outlets, help us put up posters, help us make sure that everybody's aware that's going on, I'm not going to do it. So that's what I need.
Sorry, I'm just, I, councillor, I'm just to come back to you on that. I absolutely agree that the motion's carried and we must get behind it and we must make sure that there's volunteers to do them things. Absolutely. Anne?
I think also, we don't always hear back from people, do we? But I'm a member of a few local organisations where they've got newsletters, they've got little bits online and social media and things like that. They gradually, all included, about the coffee and about the sort of community awards and thank yous and said what a good idea it is. And it does take a little while to sort of permeate as things are at the moment, just because people aren't together. But I do think people are noticing and appreciating and making notes in their little newsletters and their, you know, bits and pieces. So at least they can see that people are trying to thank them.
Thank you Anne. Julie?
Can I just ask Ian a question, please? Have we had any nominations for the cup of coffee and cake honours this month? Can't hear you.
Ian, you're muted.
Ian?
No, okay.
No is the answer, sorry.
Thank you. And I think, you know, looking at it, I think it's really important that we come together as a council and we all do promote the active things within the community. That's what we're all here for ultimately. Whether we like the decisions that are taken or not, or whether we think there might be a better way. I think it's down to each one of us to promote and engage the community within Dali Dale for the benefit of the community. Okay. Thank you. Sorry to go back to that. I just wanted to pick up on that, Alan, because I know, I do know where you're coming from on that. Okay. Councillor and staff training. Right, Ian?
Right, so I have a little list here, so I'm sorry, I'm going to have to plot through my list. I'll try and make it as brief as possible. So can we do staff first? So I sent out the Dowc list of training. They are putting quite a bit of training out there at the moment over Zoom. And I haven't experienced some of it, it's actually very good. So the first one in terms of staff is I would like you to approve financial and budget training for me, actually. Steve, you and I talked about me having some access to the financial system. It's £50 and it's on the 28th of the 9th.
So I would like to propose that Ian has access to that at the cost of £50. Dave, are you seconding that?
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you. That's carried.
Thank you. Okay, so the second one is that Shaun and I would like to do data protection and FOI training on the 20th of November. And that is £80 each, both of us.
Okay, so again, I think if you're looking at it, the GDPR is very, very important in society these days. So I would like to, sorry, the freedom of, was it the freedom of information?
It's both actually. It's two separate courses, Steve, but they follow on from each other.
I'd like to propose, sorry Dawn, have you got a question? Dawn, you're muted.
What was the date, Ian, for your courses?
28th of November.
28th of the 9th. Do you not think that this should be, 19th?
Sorry, my finance is the 28th of the 9th and the GDPR and training is 19th of November.
Do you not think that this should?
Do you not think that this should come before the personnel, our personnel committee meeting and we discuss it and then recommend it to the full council?
I think, I think my, and that might be fine, Dawn, my only concern is that places go very quickly.
Right. What's the budget? It's like, what's the budget that you've got allocated for training?
I don't know the answer to that. Sorry. I don't know what you would agree at the start of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Anne?
I would feel both of these are totally essential and you both need to be really good on them. Because if you're not and someone's away or on holiday or whatever, you know, you're really disadvantaged. So, and I quite understand that things book up really quickly.
So the proposal is, sorry, if you'd like to step outside of standing orders, councillor Atkin has a point to make.
Thank you very much, Chair. FOI and GDPR rules are essential for any employee of the council. So I would say it shouldn't be brought before the personnel committee. It should be mandatory training for the clerk and the assistant clerk. And that's what we have at the district council. It's mandatory. Thank you, Chair.
Atkin. Okay, so the proposal is, is that we, we allow the £80 each for Shaun and Ian to attend the online courses of GDPR and freedom of information. Does anybody want to second that? James, thank you. All in favour? Dawn, we can't see you. Yeah, lovely. Thank you. Okay, that's.
Okay, thank you. So number three then is Shaun would like to do the managing staff and conducting a good appraisal 30th of September. And it's free because we have associate membership to Dalke.
Okay, so are we happy, I'd like to propose that Shaun can attend that course at a cost of nothing? Anybody want to second that? Are we all in favour? Yeah, lovely.
Okay, so now over to you guys then. So we've got two places on the managing staff and conducting a good appraisal free. So if there are two councillors who feel they may benefit from that, probably on the personnel committee. Then that will be a good use of your time, I would suggest.
I would like to attend that, Ian, please.
What's the date?
28th of September, I think that one, James, isn't it?
Yes, it's the, it's the 30th of September, actually, James. Yeah.
30th of September, yeah.
No?
It's in the daytime, isn't it, I'm assuming?
Yeah, they are in the daytime. Most of these are daytime, yeah.
10am till 11.30. It's an hour and a half.
Okay, nobody else?
Dawn?
What day is it?
Okay, we'll do it.
Dawn?
Yeah, Dawn. Yeah, so Ian and myself.
Unmute, Dawn.
I'm on mute now.
Okay, I've got you down for that, Dawn, along with Steve. So I've got Planning Essentials on the 2nd, Monday, the 2nd of November, and that is £50. It's 10 o'clock till 2.30, if anybody's interested in that.
Which one's that one?
10 till 12.30 and sorry, that one.
Yeah. 2nd of November.
Which one?
Planning Essentials, Dave.
I've done, did that one.
Okay.
Was it, was it any good, Julie?
Um, I didn't find it particularly helpful.
I did it as well. It was, I think it was a lot of stuff that we already knew.
Yeah.
So if I can step outside of standing orders, councillor Atkin has a point to make on this.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. As to planning training, if members of your planning committee would like to have a conversation with me regarding planning, as you know, I'm the chair of the planning committee at the district council and also a member of the planning committee at the county council. So I can offer a wealth of information to anybody who would like to pick my brains over planning. So the offer is there for you to meet with me or do a Zoom meeting. You can ask me as many questions as you like and we'll get through it. And I think that's probably more beneficial to you rather than going on a course, because these courses, I do know I am the chair of the working group for the Members Development Working Group at the district. And I'm also the vice chair at County Hall for Member Development. So I have got a wealth of information in training. So I'm quite happy to facilitate a meeting with members of your planning committee. So you can pick my brains and I can give you some advice.
Okay, I promise these are the last two. So Steve and Alan are on councillor finance training on the 28th of the 9th. We have another free space if anybody wants that.
Dawn, are you, would you like that?
You'd like that? Okay. And then the last one, given that we have a new councillor in Jason, we have a councillor essentials training on the 7th of the 10th. I don't know whether that's a date you could make, Jason?
Yes, absolutely. No problems at all.
Okay, it's 1 till 3.30. And what I'll do is I will drop you the details after the meeting.
Okay, now I just propose that we pay the £50 for that place for our new councillor, councillor Farmer. Thank you. All in favour? Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's it, Steve. Thank you.
Okay, brilliant. And that brings us on to personnel now. And I'd like to propose that the approval of the staff handbook, we we defer that until September as the papers only came out today. It's quite a lengthy document. And I think we all need time to read it, absorb it and ask questions if needs be. So I would like to propose that we defer that to September.
Yeah, second.
All in favour?
Dave?
Thank you. And the bullying and harassment procedure, I would also like to propose that we defer that until September as well. So that we have time to read it and ask questions.
I ask one thing to be considered. Yeah, so I agree it should be deferred, but if we could, if we could consider one thing between, on that particular paper. It feels very unfair to me. It feels very unfair that if an employee is guilty of bullying and harassing somebody else, they're guilty of gross misconduct and therefore will almost certainly be dismissed. Whereas a councillor gets a little rap on the hands, maybe has to make an apology. And while that is, I'm sure that's, there's a legal reason why that, that's the case. It doesn't make it fair. And I wondered whether we should, whether it's possible to have some kind of voluntary code amongst us as town councillors. That if we are bound to be guilty of bullying and harassing, that we will step down.
Okay. I think my understanding is, Alan, that if anybody behaves in that manner, it can be referred directly to Dalke, is I think it is. Who would then deal with that internally and they can then take sanctions. And I believe that is the correct mechanism and the only mechanism for that to go. I think it's Dalke. Am I right, Ian?
Yeah, you are. Yeah. So Alan is right. The sanctions, the sanctions are quite soft, frankly.
I know, nobody within the council, no, I did the, the training with Shaun on this. And it's, you like, there isn't, one councillor can't take a sanction against another councillor. It always has to go back to Dalke. And they will then either mediate or they will make decisions as to if an apology's or they can even stop attending meetings, Alan, they can sanction them and say, well, you're not allowed to attend the meetings. And if you can't attend the meetings, then effectively you can't work as a councillor, so.
Okay, well, that, that's my point. I think if you read it, it feels very, very harsh, quite rightly harsh on the employee. And it feels very soft, the way it's, the way it's worded on the councillor and therefore isn't fair for me.
Okay. Points noted, Alan. Thank you. And, okay, so that brings us just then to the confidential section. So there's no members of the public. Yes, there is councillor Atkin. So I have to ask you to leave at this point. Thank you for attending and thank you for your input.
Thank you very much, Chair. I look forward to the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we all right to still record this, Ian?
Yes. Oh, actually, no, that's a very good point. I probably should stop the recording.